North Smithfield will begin its open forum, the search for a general law section forty-two dash forty-six dash six subsection D. Chris Kristen, the witness to speak is Deana Finnegan.
Oh, can we sign on? Are you supposed to sign on, please?
Absolutely. Please sign on. If you want to speak, I'll just have to go listen.
Thank you.
So I was recently surprised to learn there was a new member for the North Smithfield planning board. I'm surprised because I know specifically this town council required a rigid five-step, month-long process which I myself went through to become a member in January of 2013. For the first time in this town's history, the town council requested that all planning board candidates submit, they advertise for it, they submit a letter of intent, they submit a brief town application, they submit a resume, they resi- submit references, and then they had in-person interviews with the council. Because this five-step process was never required before in passing, I had asked Mr. Zelinski, you know, why, what was going on with that, and he said that it was because the planning board was so important in that it was imperative that we had quality members. I asked Ms. Nadev the same thing, and she expressed a similar opinion, that we have stable, quality members. The entire planning board unanimously believed that the process should be standardized through all boards and commissions equally, to the extent it was on the planning board agenda as an item that we worked on for three meetings, which Paul, you know, because you're the liaison with the town council, so you've got all the emails on it, and you all received the meetings minutes that you all approved in your meetings. The planning board spent a lot of time and effort revising the application to be extremely thorough, asking several questions that would be important to all boards and commissions, and the new application was adopted and had been posted on the website in April 2015. I spoke with our town clerk, and she confirmed that there's no record of any letter of interest, no application, no resume, no references, nothing for this new member. So I guess what I'm not understanding is, why is this new member not the same as the rest of the planning board was subject to with all the applications? The same five-step process? That was just fifteen months ago. It wasn't a long time ago. That was fifteen months ago, or at least required to complete the application before this person was considered. I'm just wondering why it was different? That's a question. Why was it different? Does anyone have an answer?
Well, for me, I made the nomination. The applicant did send members of the council a letter that just didn't go to the clerk's office, but came to members of the council. That position's been vacant for quite some time on the planning board. He's a licensed general contractor both in the state of Rhode Island and Massachusetts. He's a twenty-year business owner in general contracting construction, and I made the nomination, and you know what? I stand by it.
Yeah, is there a reason?
Before I ask another question, may I answer the first question? I'm a backup counsel of Soli's opinion. I share the same sentiments. Let me ask you a question now. You came onto the planning board, and I think you were instrumental in driving this five-step process, correct? Was it not you?
I, not that I know. I believe it was someone else.
Okay, was it Mr. Lentz, and you?
Okay. Going back to 2014 in December, the council didn't want to vote on the planning board. It was tabled by Mr. Alter, who was here at the time, because he felt that it was a very important position. You seconded the motion to table it and make sure we advertised for it. Mr. Erickson then came to you folks and said, "Hold on, we've got important stuff coming up. We won't have a quorum. We need to look at who we have for applicants." Angela, who, I can't pronounce the name publicly, was the secretary to the planning board for five years. She knew her stuff when it came to it, and that wouldn't even, that wasn't even entertained. And that Dr. Roberts?
Roberts?
Yep. Was the only one that you nominated to, for her to be on the board, and then you made the motion to table it again and then go through this process.
So let me, let me ask you a question. Did you try until you come on, there was no such process, correct?
There was no such process, no.
There was there one for Mr. Nayler, there was there one for Mr. Dr. Lucian Benoit, although he was reappointed.
It wasn't just me, though. There were several applicants that went through there.
Let me ask you this. How's the dynamics of the planning board?
I'm sorry?
How is the current dynamics of the planning board? Are you all working well together?
We're working very well together. I'm the vice chair now.
Beautiful. Every one of those members of the planning board, most of either nominated by me, seconded by me, but everyone was voted by me for that position. So now you tell them this seems to be a little glitch. I understand the five-step process.
But you're not the whole council, is what I'm saying.
I understand. I'm speaking for myself.
And there's a process that needs to be respected.
I am speaking for myself.
Why was it different for me and for the people that, why did that position at the time different than any other time?
My point is?
You don't think that's discrimination?
I don't. I think you're functioning quite well. Now, what I think is discrimination, if the rest of the planning board shares your opinion, we can hear from chairperson.
You know that they do, Mrs. Zelinski.
I haven't read the meetings.
Because we submitted all the meeting minutes, and you know that because we had wrote a letter about the whole thing.
I understand wrote a letter about the process. Has the planning board meant to discuss this recent event?
I'm sorry?
Has the planning board?
No, we have not.
Tell the meeting to discuss this recent event?
No.
So you're having ad hoc meetings, or you're discussing this among yourself? Do you share the sentiments of every planning board member?
Yes.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm just going to say that I'm happy that you got appointed. I'm happy with the composition of the planning board. Extremely happy that Mike's on the planning board, and I would hope that the planning board members would welcome him into the fold like you all will welcome him.
That still doesn't answer the question of the process that found you.
And you said that perception is that you are not happy with the recent appointment.
I didn't say anything about the recent appointment. I don't know him from boot, but I know that none of the process was followed, yet we had to jump through hoops for a month for the whole thing, for our nominations. Why was it different? What's on the agenda? Why was it different?
You jumped through hoops?
Okay. So we had to have a letter of intent, we had to have an application, we had to have a resume, we had to have references, we had to be interviewed. I thought you would have called me and asked for a urine test for a drug sample, for God's sakes. It's a little ridiculous for a volunteer.
I think that statement's a little ridiculous. So if you want to move on to your next question, you spoke what you wanted to say. I said what I wanted to say.
It still didn't answer my question, though. Why the process is different from candidate to candidate? Why is the process different?
Just a second.
Deana Nayler?
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here tonight to express my concern about the appointment of Mike Fornier as the second alternate to the planning board that will meet on the April fourth meeting of the town council. It has come to my attention that this gentleman has a number of zoning violations that have been, occurred over a period of approximately two years, and to my knowledge, at least up to date, have not been totally resolved. My concern relative to that is that how do you put a person who, in, through his actions over the last two years, seems to have a level of disregard for the ordinances, and you put them on a board that is charged with basically enforcing or making sure that ordinances and regulations are followed? Our job, at least I see my, our job on the planning board as a technical position, that we follow the R and D regulations and the zoning ordinances and make sure that everything is by the letter. It is also a legal position, that we get legal advice from our council to make sure that we do the process properly. This gentleman, I don't know this gentleman. I've never met him before. I'm only seeing, again, from afar, that this gentleman has a history of approximately two years of zoning violations and disregard for our ordinances, and now he is in a position where he's going to be charged with a holdover. That seems a little strange to me, and I really could question the wisdom of him at that point.
Mr. Erickson?
One of my most important jobs is helping to train new members of the planning board, and I've been doing this for a long time, and I can tell you that if someone is not motivated and accepts the premise of land use controls, it is very, very hard to train And I'm wondering, how many of you had full disclosure when you voted? Were you aware of his zoning violation record? Nobody? Nobody was aware?
I was there. I was with it.
Mr. Zelinski, were you aware?
Do you care to elaborate the zoning violations, Mr. Erickson? Do you have them written down?
I don't have them written down, but they involve running a commercial business in a residential zone. An excess number of trucks, noise, sawing on Babel Sauve. And after a long period of time, the town entered into an agreement rather than go to court. He paid fifty dollars for court costs and signed the agreement. We don't know if those terms of agreement have been met yet. There is no closure in that file. Were you aware of these issues?
I wasn't.
Mr. Zelinski? You were?
Yes.
Ms. Nayev?
No.
You were not. You were not. Kim?
I believe there was an email that was sent to all of us going back a month or two ago.
Regarding?
The difficulties with Mr. Fornier's business and the issues he had with the town.
So you were.
Wait, wait. Can you be a little more specific? Was the email from Mr. Fornier about the difficulties he was facing?
Yes.
Yes.
But not anything from the town, just?
But not anything from the town. Because this is important.
But you all have access to the same public records. So when you heard from him, did you go and check the record that was in the building department?
I did not.
Are you suggesting, Mr. Erickson, that town council members go to the building department and ask to see records?
I expect that you go through the files.
Will you let me finish my question? Or is it possible that we would rely on the town administrator or the building and zoning official to supply us with those records?
If it never goes through the town clerk's office, nobody even would see it coming, and nobody would be able to give you any advice. No one raised a peep to me about what was going on. The standard process is to apply through the town clerk and then go through the five-step process, which has kept this kind of information, brought this kind of information to the fore, and was not done in this case. So what I would suggest is that you put this on the agenda for next time, and review the file, and then reconsider the vote. Or if you find it ugly enough, you can remove the person for cause. And I think this needs to come to the light of day, because it's very difficult for, it's bad enough that people call me up and say, "What's going on with the town council?" I don't want to have to defend what's going on with the planning board, because this has been an extraordinarily good planning board, very thorough. I can't tell you how many times they have asked questions that totally changed the course of a design and made it much more useful for the town. You don't want someone on there who objects to the very premise of land use regulation. Period.
You're making an assumption that Mr. Fornier is objecting to the land use laws.
Let's put it this way. Someone normally wouldn't do the things in zoning, against zoning, that he has done if they believed in their heart that this was the correct, you know, that the zoning regulations and land use regulations were appropriate. If we can't reach a common ground on this, then we really don't have much hope as a planning board. I don't want to see this planning board go down the same rattle that the town council has. You've become?
Interesting founder, Mr. Erickson.
You've become an embarrassment to the state, around the state. We all have to go to meetings around the state and listen, what's wrong with your town council? Now you want to do it to the planning board.
Can I back up to a question I asked you previously? I said, "Could you list the zoning issues?" And you said, "Commercial business in a residential area, excess truck noise and sawing." Are those on record with the building zoning official?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yeah.
You also went and said, "The town entered to an agreement for fifty-dollar court costs." Do you know why? Do you know the specifics of that agreement for fifty dollars?
No, but here's what happens in zoning, so you all know.
So you don't know what the agreement was about, but yet you brought it up?
The agreement said fifty dollars court costs, and it listed a number of things that had to be complied with. And the reason that towns do this is that if you go to court on these cases, they can then be appealed to superior court, and this could go on for years. The expeditions thing to do is have the assistant solicitor sit down with the parties and try to work out an agreement that everybody can sign to, and then list a series of steps that have to be taken. And that's what happened in this case. I credit the prosecutor for taking the expedition's way out to get this thing fixed.
But you don't know what it was, correct?
What?
You do not know what the agreement was for the fifty-dollar court costs. You don't know the iterations on the agreement.
It's written in the file. You're going to get the entire file before the next meeting, all one hundred and forty-two pages of it in PDF.
Michael Clinton?
I can't be here to speak about the gold property. I don't know if I'm going to have the stamina to hang around till you come out. It's a closed session, and we get to that issue, but, you know, we went through this route a couple of years ago with the gold property, and it was, it was an astronomical dollar amount that was being asked for that land. It's been backed before, it's got a modified price. I'm told it doesn't contain all of the land that was included the last time, but I would just really beg you to consider other alternatives to what we could spend that money on. I mean, open space is wonderful. I voted for that bond issue at the time. That bond was floated at the time when the economy was prosperous and there was money for things that were extras, but we need roads improvements, and that bond that was just passed isn't going to make a dent in the major roads that need improvement in this town. If you're going to use a million dollars or plus for anything, it should be more road money. You could spend ten million and we wouldn't be caught up on the roads. So I just hope you consider prioritizing. Just because people voted for that bond referendum at the time doesn't mean that circumstances are the same and that everybody feels the same way. And secondly, the last time it was presented, I think we used an appraisal that was submitted by the, by the potential seller, and he hired, I think it was Scotty Associates in Providence to support a higher price. I would ask that you use, if you're going to go forward with this, when the federal government purchases land or any acquisition type through DEM, if the DEM is making a purchase of development rights or land, if they're getting subsidized by the federal government, there's a certain standard and type of appraisal that has to be done. There's only a handful of people in Rhode Island and Connecticut who are certified to do those appraisals. They end up being about a hundred-plus pages in length. It's an extremely complicated appraisal process. I hope you at least take that step to make sure that we're paying a fair price and not just simply let someone set the price and then just, you know, accept it with a local appraiser, a local realtor saying, "Oh, yeah, that sounds fair." So if we have to do it, and I really think you need to prioritize what we have to spend the money on. That's primary, that is the reason I came here. But listening to the debate that just happened, I have to add true sense to that, I'm sorry. But when I was appointed, it was posted, it was advertised, and I got the appointment following the routine that I was supposed to do, it did do, and yet the council was criticized because it wasn't advertised enough and there wasn't enough notice. And right after that, you made another appointment to the school committee. You didn't post it, you didn't advertise it. I'm going to tell you, I felt resentful for that, okay? And Tony, it was your appointment. And again, here we have another appointment where you're recommending someone for appointment, and it wasn't advertised. So it's like, every time Tony has someone who they want on the committee, are we going to not advertise and seek candidates? It was a lot of work to do what you had to do to apply for the job, and I do believe, I'm not saying anything about this gentleman, I don't know from Adam whether this is true or false, but I just think the standard should be followed. If you make, the first person applied, the second person has to, you've got something in place, I don't understand why we're not following it, as somebody who had to do it and then watch someone else not have to do it.
Mr. Lombardi was on my appointment. That was Mr. Zelinski's appointment.
Who seconded it?
I did second it. It was my appointment.
Yeah, okay. But it was somebody you approved of. So as soon as someone comes forward who you approve of, we don't follow the normal process?
Well, again, but, and I've had, I've been on this road before, and I'll move on again. Every time I went to say something about an appointment, I was told, "There is no process," right? Whether it was a budget committee appointment or everything else, when I brought it up, I was told, "There is no process." The one time I followed the "there is no process" rules, I get chastised for it. And then, even with this appointment, it's been on the agenda for months, that the vacancy there, months since I've been sitting on this council.
Well, mine was advertised in the paper. It was noticed by, everybody in town was notified they had a process to follow, and yet even when I got the appointment, people were criticizing that you didn't advertise it enough. So I just wish you'd keep that in mind, because it is, it is hurtful to have to go through those steps and then sit back and watch someone else not have to do that.
And if you recall at that time?
Not in my mind, but it was unfair.
No, but if you recall at that time, I also said, "There should be a process," but there clearly is not one.
Well, you had how many months to make the process?
Mr. President? It's roughly seven oh seven. We're past the open, I want to make a motion to continue the public justice input. Open forum, excuse me.
A second. Motion by Councilman Zelinski, seconded by Councilman Soli to extend. All of the favorites say aye? Aye. The ayes have it.
So it's unanimous, Mr. President?
Yes. Next individual is Michael Fornia.
Mike Fornia, three fifty-seven Madison Road. I don't know what the process should be. I don't know what the process is going to be. I'll jump through any hoops. I want to be on some type of board. I want to be a part of this town. I applied months ago to be on a different committee, and it got knocked down because I had violations. I moved to North Smithfield twelve years or so ago, moved my business with me, registered my business in town, just so you can get all the facts. It depends what side of the fence you stand on, Mike Paul, okay? So if you won't remember that far back, depends what side of the fence you stand on as to what story you want to believe. Anyways, I registered my business day one in town. I registered all my trucks, five of them, in town. Had multiple meetings with the previous building inspector, Mr. Benoit. He appraised all of my equipment that I paid taxes on in town. I paid taxes on all my trucks in town. A year or so ago, I got a letter that I'm in violation. I have too many trucks on my property. I said, "What do you mean, I have too many trucks on my property?" I pay taxes for these trucks. They're registered in town. Can I park them at Tom Hall? I thought it was a legitimate question. Why am I all of a sudden paying taxes on something, but yet I can't keep it in town? As soon as I was shown the ordinance, that what I was doing was against the ordinance, moved it. My business is no longer in town. That revenue, as little as it might be, because I'm a small business, who, by the way, I work in multiple states, okay? But as small as I may be, that little bit of revenue from Mike's Home Improvement is no longer in North Smithfield, because it depends what side of the fence you stand on. My business is very successful. I've been almost twenty-five years in business. All I wanted to do is be a part of this town and try to help this town. I'm a successful businessman. I do multi-million, millions of dollars a year in business. I think I can be an asset to the planning board. Whatever the process might be, if you guys want to add something to it, I don't know what you went through. It wasn't brought to me that night. I'll do, you want to go through an interview process? Bring it on. I sent in an application. I was called upon. I accepted it. I look forward to working with you. I'm really a nice guy. I'm not as bad as that folder you think that's down in Tom Hall, Paul says I am.
I have a question.
Please, please, at any time, come visit me and my property. Mr. Zelinski has, Mr. Soli has. I invite all of the town council, come and see how bad it really is on Madison Road. It's not that bad. It depends what side of the fence you stand on, and some town councils know what I mean by that. So I look forward to the opportunity to work with you. I hope you are open to me coming in. I think I have a lot to offer, and I hope we can all move forward and stop the nonsense. Thank you.
Robert Poullochein, thirty-one Socket Road. Do you have anything to comment tonight, is that what's going on dealing with the Cumberland Socket water line and how it will affect the ratepayers in North Smithfield? Recently, there was brought to light that this two-point, this twinkle parcel of land, which is valued or taxed at a value of thirteen thousand dollars. The city, the city through its enterprise fund will purchase for a hundred thousand dollars. Like the wastewater treatment plant, it doesn't pass the smell test. It appears that also torn this parcel is an easement by the Algonquin Gas Line is going through there as well. So why the city didn't get an easement for a few thousand dollars versus buying it through the enterprise fund in North Smithfield, because I'm one of the ratepayers, I have Socket water. I pay my water bill to the city in Socket. And my humble estimation is that what they're doing is ingratiating an individual far in excess of what the value of the property is, and also as well as the, also too, is how it affects the ratepayers. It's so easy to take it out of the enterprise zone. They're going to give him a tax benefit by this purchase. He said he's going to donate the money to, whether it be the city or other entities in the city. However, is that, as far as I can see, it's basically hooking the price of something, giving an individual unfair, unfair tax, tax, tax benefit, which all of us will pay Once the final passage is tonight, I plan to contact the Attorney General's office, the PUC who regulates this, the Department of Revenue, the Internal Revenue Service, and I think I'm missing one entity, but nevertheless, is that I think it should be known that we'll be dealing with this issue for the ratepayers of North Smithfield in the future. It'll be, I'll also place it on the agenda. Thank you.
That concludes the open forum.
What is this that the House is hearing, Council, while those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility?
Amen. Madam Clerk, Rocco Rocco, please.
Salves. Here, Mrs. Nayev.
Here.
Mr. Soli.
Here.
Mr. Zelinski.
Yeah.
Mr. Bouschain.
Here. Discussion by council. What are the reaction on Perry report posted since? Mrs. Perry's not going to be here this evening, so I'd like to continue this, um, second meeting.
Second.
Motion by the Chair, Speaker, and Counselor, Nayev. Is any further discussion? Madam Clerk, Rocco Rocco, please.
Madam Clerk, roll for her, please.
Ms. Alves? Mrs. Nato? Mr. Soli? Mr. Zolinski? Mr. Bouchette?
Yes. Executive session. Round General is forty-two, forty-six, five, subject to Section A, Section Two. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation. One, contract negotiations with Perry Corporation. And two, any discussion of job performance, character, physical, mental health of persons provided such persons or persons affected by and require that such discussion be held at an open meeting.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to go into executive session under RIGL forty-two dash forty-six dash IA two. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, contract negotiations with Park Corporation, so it's item A. I don't know what item B is for, so I'm only making the information right now for A, and I would like to invite Mr. Joe Cardella.
Okay, motion by council, Speaker of the Council, Nato.
Does anyone know what B is? I'll make the motion for that.
I'll come and look at that. Ms. President? So we had discussion by council, what other reaction on power report. Now we just ask that we continue. And now we're asked to go into executive session.
This is different.
Contract with Park, is it different altogether?
It is. The first one is for the signs, and the second one is for the road bonds.
Okay. Well, it doesn't say road bonds. Okay. It said that, I will discuss it. Thanks.
Does anyone know what item B is for? Are we going into executive session four? Okay, so I'll make, are we ready for it? So I'll make the motion. Also to include an executive session, RIGL forty-two, forty-six, A one. Any discussions of job performance, character, physical, mental health of persons provided that such persons or persons affected may require that such a discussion be held at an open meeting.
Chair seconds. Any further discussion?
Mr. President? Just as a matter of protocol here, I'm willing to certainly going to go into the executive session over the unanimous vote, and I will vote to approve it. But we changed the language here on the executive session head into say pertaining to collective bargaining, contract negotiations with Park Corporation regarding road bonds. I think it should be a little bit more specific. I'll make that as a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend that.
Yes, motion to amend.
Motion to amend it.
Second.
Does that make sense, Mr. Zolinski? Because it is confusing.
The mini unit's fine. Mini unit's fine. Just need to vote.
Okay.
Need to vote.
Madam Clerk, please, any amendment?
Ms. Alves? Yes. Mrs. Nato? Yes. Mr. Soli? Yes. Mr. Zolinski? Yes. Mr. Bouchette?
Yes. Now on the main motion?
Ms. Alves? Yes. Mrs. Nato? Yes. Mr. Soli? Yes. Mr. Zolinski? Yes. Mr. Bouchette?
Yes.